Pass that, we had executive report, there wasn't a whole lot there, just things are moving forward as normal. The homes and now the condos and now they're gonna go up there, some others in Cool Rapids including that, we're getting finished up. Our budget, one thing to note, it was actually looking better than what it. We're ahead on our budget, but that's only because some of the new vehicles that are still waiting on haven't, we haven't paid for them yet. And they're just waiting and pretty typical, it's about to put in, you know, a year in advance or better, just to get the vehicles they need. So it's kind of a challenge out there.
Do they even have, probably do they know what kind of a delivery date they have?
Not really, I mean you order it and you.
Kind of wait.
Wait and then the other thing is it's hard to kind of budget because what does that cost, you know, as fast as things go up it's. But yeah, you look at the fleet that they have, you know, you have to keep rotating vehicles, so they're watching it very closely. The staff did go to some trainings and that was good, and so they've got a lot out of them. And then that's about it.
Okay.
Pass around the package, if you want to look at it.
Okay. Hal, did you have something?
Not a lot.
Gene's got a stack over there or something.
Paul, in regards to this filling out his positions and stuff of that nature, he reached out to me and a couple of questions on that. About it. Yeah, replaced some good replacements. They're trying to figure out how to jockey some of these around to make it fit. He's reached out to me and me, I was employed there for 12 years and looked for my opinion on some of them. But in all along, he's got a good, small but a good group to choose from.
Oh, good.
Relinquishing too much information in regards to somebody I think might be infected by their current employment.
Sure, that makes sense.
Yeah. Yeah, that's really, you know, fifteen percent chance of rain every hour of every day last week, we got a lot planned.
I think they probably got a lot done on secondary roads that they probably weren't planning either, because gosh, I thought we'd probably be drowned at all, I mean.
It was supposed to be a washout all week.
Yeah. And Wednesday, Tuesday and Wednesday and Thursday actually weren't bad at all.
Salatown, it sure looks like they're gaining a lot of ground on that road down there.
I mean, they don't have the rain we have, you know, we had almost an inch the other night, you had to go two miles to the east of us. Fifteen hundred.
Yeah. One of them spotty years.
Really is.
Call, call the churches and put out the bulletin, we need to reorient our prayers to different areas.
I guess we can pray for rain, I don't think anybody ever specifies how much and on what time.
Same word.
I like the story where the congregation all meets to pray for rain and one kid brings an umbrella, now look at him like funny and he says, whoa, we're praying for rain, aren't we? Believe it's gonna happen.
That's faith, brother, that's.
Yeah, you're a charity Friday.
Okay, that's yours is this Friday?
Oh, and Ty and I and Greg did sit in the rain yesterday down by Dallas City waiting for our first shelter to show up, but. Greg finally made a phone call and they're coming today.
Remember they're there early, yeah, actually.
As I'm sitting here looking at the pictures just came in, the level into the Dallas City site.
You bet. We're getting, we're getting.
They were gonna set.
Charter Oak, Dallas City and then up to Charter Oak and then they're gonna come load the small one at the fire training center.
Okay.
And then tomorrow they'll plant the vale and then down at Manella.
Okay.
Yeah, nice big crane, should be in good shape.
Which, does anybody have Ron Kinkle's phone number?
Ron Kinkle? I can get it, I might.
He's the adjoining landlord to the north down there, when we get to.
And we want to clean.
Get to that point of putting new fence and we probably should just contact him, so they see there's a gate, does he need access or whatever? Just to touch base with him, so I'll let him know that we're probably gonna care about that new.
Yep, see what he needs to do. Yeah, I actually was kind of spotting to see where his field entries were when I was pulling out of there.
I see he pulled his fence all out.
Yeah.
Along there, a good portion of it, so maybe he's planning on putting new fence in, because he did on the east side of it.
Yeah.
So maybe, maybe he's got a fence and crew kind of lined up.
Yeah, maybe. Yeah, but if you have to get ahold of him with.
Yeah.
You want to call him or?
I have his phone number, I would.
Dave's looking to hook you up. Okay.
Yeah, no, submit, no submit.
Never hurts.
One more, no somebody, I think.
If we had Jerry here, she probably has it in her phone.
Yeah.
That was for.
Yeah.
Yeah.
Yeah, that's about all I have.
Okay, well, thank you. Madam Hayden.
All right, first thing I want to make sure is that we're going forward on getting our Zoom meetings recorded, because there's a group of folks that don't. Can't always be here on Tuesdays at nine o'clock and would like to, you know, maybe want to get off of work, see what's going on, because we don't have the coverage that we used to have with the newspaper. There is a concern on how the word's gonna get out about the things we talk about that used to be either front page in the paper and a lot of people, I find out now, that's how they found out what we're doing. And it is not possible for those people to be here and listen, so we should be able to get something to our website that. When you want to see what's going on in the supervisors department, you can check in and see what's going on. And do we need to make sure Jake's doing that or who would be responsible?
I think he's working on it.
I thought he was working on something that so they can have it and go right on the website.
Right, so that people don't have to.
I think so.
Through.
YouTube.
Yeah, yeah, that's what he was gonna do, so just want to make sure we keep that.
He said he was uploading already recorded ones and I'm like, Jake, I'm not sure we're worried about the past.
No, because the newspaper was covering that, yeah.
Ongoing, yeah, that's what I said.
Keep it focused here.
I try.
Yeah, I know, I make sense.
Yeah, yeah.
And then I think.
Yeah.
Time frame is how long they need to be on there, I don't think you can put one on there.
Right, and if, because if we still have access to them, we could make them available, me being in the future or whatever.
Once on YouTube, they're always on there.
I don't know.
They should be on mine twenty years from now, if you're YouTube. You just know what to look for, eh?
Be like being a movie star, you know, look, I have an old picture there.
I watch a lot of movies.
I was here, I did have a public health meeting and it was a long one, lots of things were discussed. We spent a lot of time with color and paper and a lot of words, so everybody's welcome to read everything that happens, I'll pass that on. Be something to do, but the interesting part for me was, and I did question how this is. We're right where we need to be on our revenues, so the money's coming in just exactly like they budgeted, but the expense side is down. And so me, to me, I'm like, well, if we're making as much money and not spending as much, maybe we should kind of not be looking for more help if we're able to. Have the revenue continue to come in at the same pace and we haven't, and the reason our expenses are down is because we're down two nurses in the hospice area. So then they, you know, made the comment that the gals are working, you know, way too many hours. So the gal that takes care of the hospice was there and she's working approximately forty hours a week and sometimes maybe forty-five. And so I still kind of have some questions out there of, you know, how that really works, so, but I don't work there, but I do have. I wonder if they were where we need to be with staffing, but Lynn did say that there's issues or things with the way that the brands are coming in and things. But the interesting part here, I think, is to maybe just read through this and see where we're at with actual numbers, that might help. It's review time for Kim, so we've got our job review that we all have to do and get that turned back in. Just some things on that board that I'm still kind of getting a feel for, they wanted an update on the city center. And so in that kind of a board that we're having Jake do his, that the holdup has always been that, at IT room and all the extra. Electric things that he needs, and so today hopefully we'll be able to move past that, get that water pipe moved. And be able to get a good RFP for the upstairs, because region twelve really said we don't need an architect, we don't need a constructional engineer, we just need somebody to. Keep focused on what needs to happen first, which is the bathroom door needs to be taken out and changed, so we get somebody to paint it. After it's painted, we get somebody in there to deep clean the carpets and Ishbury to move in, it just does not seem like such a huge project that it should take a year to get us in there. And so my mission is to get that accomplished.
Did you have your meeting yesterday? Did you have Karen give me back on the email thing, so I know when they?
Oh, sure.
I appreciate it.
It was a little complicated because she had sent out the original, the wrong one first and then, you know, so, but. So now we've decided that we're gonna put everything on a consent agenda and then we're to review the consent agenda first, if we want to take it off the consent agenda and have it over here so we can discuss it. So we have a consent agenda. Yeah, so, but otherwise it was all good, they did talk about the insurance compensation and how. The way that the insurance has gone up, that's gonna affect their budget by forty thousand dollars and it is what that is, so. Anyways, you're welcome to look through all of this. It's really nice lunch. Leftovers, congratulations. I meant that, it was very nice.
It's usually pretty good.
Yeah, it was really. There and a veggie tray and a fruit tray and cupcakes, of course. Akron cheese, you know, so anyways, that's about it for me this week, but just to keep on with our Zoom meeting to make sure that people have access to it. It's not always, so Ty is on, I.
Here's your chance.
You got a half hour to burn here. You should have turned that off from nine forty-five, go ball, get up here.
We can always take a break.
Yeah, we can.
We're giving you extra time for all those times we're shorting.
All the time I get shortened, no, I didn't do anything last week.
It's tough to be in the chair when you all of a sudden you got time.
We got time, yeah, I'm kidding, because you really don't think you're gonna have time. I didn't really have anything last week. My calendar to make sure I'm not fibbing you. Well, Kyle brought up the tower settings, we're supposed to be last week and then we're, because of the rain, we're doing them this week, today and tomorrow. And that should, that should actually start propelling us forward. Because I don't think, you know, the way Greg talked, Tim had said that Raycom doesn't require the generators to be there, so they'll get, probably get right to work now.
What, what's left after the sheds get put in?
Well, after, after we get the shelters in, we, we get, we kind of get some of the stuff, we don't get the air conditioning units hooked up, so the electric, the electrician will come in. I suspect, well, we have to have a crane, I suppose we have to have a crane and put the dishes and stuff up too, won't we?
I would speculate, not a big, not a big heavy crane, but something that can.
I was just trying to figure out where we could put like fence in, out, you know, we could probably put fence in then, get the fencing done. Because I know Lance wanted to put some cattle off, you know, on his pasture, he was talking about buying some calves. So I think if we can get that done, it probably keep him from getting crabby ass. So fencing, then we gotta do fences around the sites and, you know, I've, I've been trying to figure out what the plan was for fencing, because where we're finding all them grounds, there's ground. Cables coming up out of the ground all over out there at every site. And they said some of them are for the fence and others are for, you know, like the LP tank and stuff. I suspect we want the LP tanks outside of that fence so that the LP guy can come and fill them.
That's the debacle, yeah, that kind of been wanting to figure out, because these spots that had cattle running on them.
Yep.
So we're gonna have a containment fence, secure area, and then we're gonna have kind of an unsecure area.
Yep.
But we still need to keep cattle on it. The one that passed was two pence. Right?
Yeah, no, I think, I'm trying to, I'm trying to think like in Charter Oaks that, that pads forward.
But you're not talking a big area around that.
Around the tower itself, the chain link fence, that won't be real big. That'll actually, like, if you go up the Ridge Road, the fence comes around the tower and around where the generator sits. And then it kind of butts up to the sides of the shelter and then that leaves the front door open, which is a locked door, obviously, but it leaves the door open to access for when we're out checking stuff.
But we have room to expand, I just felt great, he asked if the spots are owned or leased, and I said, we own them all, the thought process, we bought. You know, up to an acre or whatever, we're only use a quarter of an acre, but make it farner.
Sneaking farms, we don't have to do weed patrol or anything, you know.
Well, but still.
Mow it all, tend to it like that. So we, we still have like an acre. And an acre over in Vale and Adrian Charter Oak, about a half acre down in Dallas City.
But that fencing, the fencing would only be done on our property. So we would be responsible for it, we're either one fence or two fences.
Right, so that's why I was wondering, I'm just gonna try to look up at GIS and see what's like the tower site. Know where the Charter Oak is, see where that LP tank is, because there's only one that comes around that whole tower, so. I mean, it's something that.
Out there is Sleswig?
No, one by the cemetery.
Oh, okay, over there.
Yeah. Because the one in Sleswig, I mean, there's no.
I think that LP tank sits outside, because they had an area where they were gonna have another fence, but they never butted up.
But I know Roberts are gonna have to.
Yeah, because he's gonna run calves right next to it.
Yeah, we're gonna want, and then which kind, the way that driveway cuts into his property.
And we bought a, we don't want pee look, looking peas, because we own the driveway.
Okay.
And that way, you know, there wasn't any confusion there. And that's how he wanted to do it, so that's what we did.
What did we end up with, you know, last time you talked on that post being on the other side of the fence for?
Those electric box.
Yeah, we're having to deal with that, yeah.
So what do we?
I wanted to be out there this morning, but obviously we're busy, because I'm pretty sure Mike must be out there, but I'll go catch him at Charter Oak later today then. And if we have to drive back down there, I'm like, I don't, we will. But it was actually on his plans where it's actually set, and so I would say that it looks to me, without knowing all the details between the entities involved. That REC Harrison County put it where it was drawn to be.
So then it would be Freemans' fault for not catching it in the plans, being outside of our.
That would be my assessment at this point, how's that?
Hold their feet to the fire.
Without, without compromising anybody's position at this point, I would, yeah. Putting their feet to the electric. Okay.
Nothing that can't be fixed.
Oh, no, it's fixable, but you know. We are trying to, you know, pay better attention, or not better attention, but we're trying to close, stay close, closely monitoring all of our expenses, because, you know. This is, as you get busy with stuff right, right now, it'd be easy to mess stuff and end up with extra expense going forward.
Do Freemasons help with contacting any potential vendors that would?
Not, not particularly. Not particularly, no.
But you want to hire them to do that?
We, we actually have the.
Do that or not, we do that or not.
Oh, surely would for a fee.
Otherwise, how do, is it typically that AT&T and Verizon reach out to counties knowing they have towers?
Probably.
What, what we were told, and this was actually what Ray told me when we were early in the process. Because I just asked, I said, how do people know, he said, when we, when we file for that.
FCC.
For, for, yeah, when we file for that permit, and he said, once these are completed, then they'll be shown as active, and he says, then you'll probably start getting some.
Calls.
And that, and Dwayne kind of confirmed that, but what, how it worked on the other.
You're thinking this out on potential revenue.
Well, and I actually got a recent call, I guess this was part of my report, and I don't remember who, not really a call, but it was a message from Dallas City. And they had said that they actually had a couple of different ones, and then I talked to somebody at a graduation this past weekend, that lives by the school in Dallas City. They have terrible phone service there, so I'm kind of hoping maybe that one of the. Phone vendors will be reaching out for that area, because that'd be, they said they'd have no signal right by the school for some reason, I don't know what would be in that.
So cellular service, you mean?
Yeah. Yeah, that's what they said, you know, they can't call out, so, I don't know, that sounds kind of. I know, I've never had any trouble, yeah, I've never had any trouble with my phone, now I wonder what service they have or something, I didn't ask that, I guess. But. I don't know, I think that. Tim and them will probably get rocking pretty hard on the communication stuff, um, our costs are probably gonna go up on that. The radio system, because, because now those other dishes have been up long enough that some of the parts are no longer interchangeable. Some of the, I don't know what's all in there, I guess, you know, but so the microwave, which they're not cheap, the microwave dishes themselves, that's probably gonna have to be replaced on the Sleswig. Ridge Road and probably this one then, so.
But I still think long term, we're better off having our own towers and going with the state system that we talked about years ago. I mean, yes, we'll have upgrades and things I walked you throughout the years, but at least the system's in place.
I actually had one of the CDC people that we're interviewing, we were talking about the tower system and, and he said, well, why would you want to build a tower system? When you got all these satellites that are going up, you know, with the Starlink and what have you, and, and I said, well, Kyle had brought up a good point, that most satellites have got a.
Delay.
Delay, and which can create echo and whatever else, but on top of that, I said, if you stop and look at it from an old soldier's perspective. And if you look at how communications are essential to any kind of an emergency or any kind of operations. Having our own system basically protects our, our own internal security and reliability. And I think that, you know, one of the first questions that I had a lot when I first got on the board was, you know, I mean, are these gonna be a long-term viable? And as long as they're making good equipment to go on these towers, which they're always gonna have to have good equipment, because you still got an operation cell in each county. These are indefinitely good to us, you know, I mean, as long as they're structured, staying maintained and. And so it's a communication system that we're not relying on somebody else, where their costs are inevitably gonna always go up. You know, even if we have to have the equipment, their costs are gonna, I mean, anybody got QuickBooks? I mean, when was the last time you thought QuickBooks got cheaper? It never gets cheaper, you know, so I think that we're actually looking at our long-term costs. And we, we should be able to control them a little bit closer ourselves, I mean, when we got to update equipment, we got to update equipment, but we're gonna have to do that anyway, so I think in the long run, you're right, this was a good, this was a very wise move to start this.
That was kind of the same thing when we first decided to go this route, well, why can't, you know, you just use your cell phones? Why do we have to spend how many millions and they, and it's, well, cell phones aren't a secure system.
Yeah.
You know, you want something, your house is on fire, or you need a police officer, or you need, you're having a heart attack, you want to make sure that.
Yeah.
Communication is.
Satellites would work, you know, we talked about that in length at first. How many times you sit in a home in a heavy rainstorm and you lose satellite signal, we can't afford to lose communication signal.
Right.
It's just like when we had our storm spotters out here a couple of weeks ago, I mean, you lose that, when that heavy clouds are over there, you lose that signal, that's when we need to be able to talk to them the most.
You know, people might think they can get by with that delay until they're the one needing that service right now.
Right, excellent point. So I think it's, I think it's a good investment for the county, every county has went to at least the state, some of them went into, went into their own secure network. I think that it's probably gonna be beneficial, we don't have any, anybody in the out, well, we already see where the state dictates a lot of things to us, it doesn't always make us necessarily happy.
The state, if I remember right, wasn't only one tower.
One tower.
It didn't cover our.
It wasn't gonna improve, no.
No, and then it was kind of an open-ended check blank.
We would have had to buy all new radios for everybody in the county, because theirs is digital.
Yeah.
And all the radios are UHF, so we would have had a million dollars in just the radio equipment to purchase, and we went with the state system and still have to support coverage.
But it didn't cover the train that we have.
Well, you know, it's like Calhoun or Carroll putting them in, I mean, now Carroll's got some rolling hills on, on the west side and maybe a little bit down in the south there. But for the most part, they're pretty flat, Calhoun's really flat, so I mean, as far as it goes, they're probably able to cover quite a bit of range with the one or two towers. I think Caroline, Calhoun put in two towers, if I remember right, I was talking to one of their supervisors.
I think most counties are building their own system now, even after they went with the state system. I think most counties are building their own system now, even after they went with the state system.
Yeah, still putting in things to get better. Yeah, and I mean, it's, you know. You got a deputy out there, you know, and almost all of our deputies, you know, in a car solo. You know, and if they're down checking something out and they see something, you know, and they're out there with their handle, you know. Well, I was talking with Greg about it yesterday before you got down there. He said, now the guy standing on the ground with his, with his handheld in Charter Oak. Can talk to a guy standing on his handheld at Westside. You, you were doing that before. So I mean, that's, you just think about that as far as the deputies go, you know, that's a heck of an improvement we got.
For a while there, they were really pushing the state system. Remember we sat in that class at ISAC and they were. And you started asking questions, what about this and this little covered train? They didn't really know how to answer our questions. No.
The ones a lot flattered and groggy.
So ISAC was pushing?
No, no, not actually, just the statewide system itself.
What was it?
At the time, and that speaker come in, it basically, they just had a presentation on about, on the state system.
I see.
And the uniqueness about state system, every snowplow, every DOT vehicle, state patrol.
Troopers, yeah.
That's how they communicate. So we're on that system and there's emergencies, some within the county. Does the state snowplow have priority over a fire or EMS?
Did you ask that?
They don't answer that.
You did, you didn't ask that.
Great point. Excellent point.
I remember the time you brought in your recording of the, the static over in Charter Oak on an emergency call and that kind of hit home with me.
Yeah.
Really was going on.
You know, now.
Granted, it's costing us more money.
Yeah.
We're still cheaper than eight million that we're gonna have that Turkleson guy build for us, so.
Yeah. Yeah, so I think the money that was probably saved on the initial three towers and. And, you know, I'd like to think that we probably saved some in the long run at least, you know, on, on the rest of them.
Or in the property, we've saved money in the long run, for sure.
No, I think that if you look at it, I think this is gonna be a valuable asset to us for a long time. And if we get some, some very good vendors to join our tower system, that'll actually serve the communities well. And then it'll actually help pay for this thing. It's really a good deal then, because if we were in a state system, I don't know that we'd have access to all that, would we, Kyle? You remember?
I don't think you, would you get, I don't think we'd get any funding from revenue, or revenue off a vendor on a state tower.
No, no, we wouldn't, no.
See, so I mean, that's probably a.
Cause it's their tower.
Their tower.
We had something, you know, I mean, cause even over by Charter Oak, I was already asked some about, would we be able to put somebody as. You know, like with, with Wynn or some, you know, wireless networks, would they be able to put on that tower? And I said, I just need to contact us so we can get them in charge with our, get them in touch with our engineer. And then that's, that's what we hired that guy for, if you remember, to be able to make sure that we don't overload our towers and that we get a fair deal. I don't know, I think that, I'm, well, I'm excited about the tower to begin. And it seems like everything moves a little bit slower than we like it to, but.
Big project.
It is a big project, you know.
The one that'll be good to have.
When did it start?
Twenty fifteen, I think it was, started the process.
But it was even before that? When was Turkleson report, twelve?
I think, no, I think it was fifteen, was right after I got on the board. And I would've got it on fifteen, so. There was some stuff talked about prior to that, but, you know.
Yeah.
So twenty fifteen. We should have it done in ten years.
I'm back on that. Yeah, I mean, it's been a project, but you know, there's a lot of moving pieces to it. And, I mean, you know, there's a lot of back and forth, getting this approved and that approved, and so, I mean.
But I still go back to Mayor Manning, or the ex-mayor, old mayor, Harvey Dale's always said. None of this happens, man, it's a pretty progressive, happens overnight. It takes years of planning and time. You think, sometimes you think it's never gonna happen, but if you don't start that ball rolling.
Well, I think like Kyle brought up with the cost, it was probably in that Turkleson report. I mean, that probably scared a lot of people at this table at that time away from the project.
It was eight million. And that, that was in twenty sixteen dollars.
Yeah. Yeah.
Ten million now.
At least.
You know, probably, probably, yeah, with, especially considering inflation's been the last few years, yeah, probably.
But we can still get it done for three million.
I'd say we, we, we did all right.
We did, we've done the taxpayers a great service.
And the kicker, being able to have it pretty well are all paid off.
Well, that's.
Thank God to COVID.
Yeah, COVID really is gonna.
But otherwise, we've been doing a good job. I know that's kinda why we're in the predicament that some of our stuff probably won't match, cause we're, we're funding it as we went.
Yeah. You know, our COVID committee's done a good job of serving the community. Speaking of that, I mean, they really, we, we. A lot of things, yeah.
Using it wisely.
Got spent on things that are gonna really benefit the taxpayer. I mean, that's kinda what they suggested we do. You remember them ISAC cases?
You know, it was pretty tight what we could use it for. And as they kinda opened it up, and then when they decided that if it was less than ten million dollars, it'd go to the general fund and, you know, it kinda. Didn't start out, seemed like it was gonna touch as many areas as it did, but now I'm happy with where we're at.
True, you know, cause I heard last week on the radio, WNAX, you're a big friend in the Midwest. You know, they report the news every half hour, it's the same news every half hour all day long, right? So you get to hear it sometimes. With the moving government shutdown, they're talking about pulling back the money.
Some of that money there.
That hasn't been spent yet.
No.
But ours is all committed, cause it's in the general now, so it's committed money.
That's what I was questioning, is like, can they come into our general fund now and swipe that back?
Cause that would cost us that seven fifty that's for the rec center, boy, I would hate to lose that.
I think that'd be a, I think they're gonna want that pretty soon.
Some of, yeah.
Maybe they'll.
I said last week, give us the copy of their receipts and we'll match them. Cause that's what, that was the plan, it was matching money. Up to seven fifty. I have no problem with starting to expend that money to them.
You bet.
As long as we got matching receipts, so.
Yeah.
That's what it's there for. Yeah, we committed that.
I didn't, I didn't drive down to the bridge lately. Have you been down there? The, the bridge north of Charter Oak?
I was there a week ago.
Yeah.
We worked on North Pier Pines and.
Yeah, so we're getting some good progress there.
On that pile of, pile of pylons all last week, I don't remember hearing them correctly.
I couldn't believe how fast that thing went.
It quit.
Yeah.
So I'm guessing they're probably four encasements and buttons and put balls work on, so.
Paul thought they'd be done pretty soon even. That's cool. Good deal. I know that bridge is always, as I'm coming down off by the cemetery in the big truck. And you look across there, there's always a car, never fails. There's one coming down the other hill, and I thought, I'm gonna meet him on this bridge, and I won't meet anybody else all the way up to eighteen. Well, I'll be happy when that's a wider bridge, and I'm sure the cars I'm meeting will be too. But anyway, that, that's a nice, nice upgrade. Had a few more to do, but. I'm trying. I got us closer.
Anybody know anybody in the National Weather Service in Des Moines? That was one complaint I had with the recent round of storms, and I've known it, you know it.
We're talking about that. Yeah.
For years, that Crawford County gets their weather warnings out of Des Moines. So by the time any warnings are posted for Crawford County, local citizens have noticed this with their brush or see your weather we've had. It's already past Charter Oak and almost past Denison before we get them. Why is that? I said, you need to talk to the National Weather Service in Des Moines. We've tried, they won't do anything about it. They won't fix it.
Well, we were talking with, yesterday with Greg about it. And he said that it's the curvature of the earth, they don't see it from their radar there. Cause as the earth's curvature, we're, we're actually lower than what they're seeing.
On the backside of what they're seeing.
Which makes sense, cause they gotta go over the Mississippi Missouri divide, you know, so they're shooting over that.
So what's, what's the best option? So to Des Moines, it'd be Omaha or Sioux City?
I would think they could switch us to where, we're kinda on the outskirts of, we're in a Bermuda Triangle type. You know, from Sioux Falls to Omaha and Des Moines, we're kinda a blob that really don't have much service, so, but in another.
Could they do a relay station like you were talking?
That's what Greg thought right away. Take some of the two point, some billion dollars the state has excess money and. Put like up a, another Doppler radar in Carroll County somewhere, so they.
Like Arcadia is where the divide is. That's where the High Point is. So then you'd be able to see all the way down to the river. And that covered the western part of Iowa, excellent, I would think. If that, I don't know, north to south.
The sad part is though, they put a dollar amount on the number of people that it would serve, and then probably do a study and say it's not worth it.
Hopefully they'd help us finish a four lane and do a little other development. We could start giving that population that it helped out. That was a little pulling for my.
Rest assured, that'll allow local fire departments to do a good job of monitoring Omaha and Sioux City weather channels. As storms are rolling in, so they're usually, they're aware of stuff before the citizens do, and that, and granted, cell phones anymore. That Jim Flowers, if you follow him on Facebook, he nails it pretty damn close all the time.
Yeah, maybe.
He still always wears them on the red night?
Well, I don't know about that. He did when he worked at Bass Pro, I do know that, when it's running through them.
I will be attending the, the necessity council meeting tonight. They're gonna be discussing the Diamond Reed Bridge. Be discussing the engagement letter for that new market tax credits. So I'll go and kinda accurate it's going on there, five o'clock tonight. So I was looking at how long it is. Take my pajamas.
That's their agenda?
That's their agenda.
Better bring a sack lunch.
I have.
Pretty board stuff in between the bridge and.
Terry, it's a night meeting, she'll have her purse with her wine stick it in it.
Her box of wine at the end of the day. I do have a few more meetings this week. I got a CDC hiring committee meeting at lunch today. Um, we've been at, well, we've been doing a little bit of work on that, so hopefully that goes well.
Said, hey, you had a good candidate the last time?
Yeah. He might be more expensive than we can afford. As he was, his wisdom was. I actually seen one of the emails that he wrote us about some of the things that he thought would help our community and, well, boy. That guy, I, I wish we could afford him, I think. I hope, wait, he ain't done yet, but.
Save the email and use it.
Yeah, well, we'll do that. We're darn sure doing that. I already got it saved. Uh, I gotta, I'm gonna try to make this Naco meeting and try to, I think Greg had to take off right after dinner today, didn't he? Or was he gonna be able to do, stay with them guys all day today?
I, I don't remember.
I wanna call him after we're done here.
How's it getting raining? You guys were in the same vehicle.
You were getting rain in your windows?
Is the Naco meeting Zoom?
Yeah, it's a Zoom. And then, oh, we got an ambassador's called, the CDC meetings this week, so. We'll see how that turns out. Um, next week's my Central Iowa Juvenile Detention Meeting. So that'll be next Friday, but. Otherwise, I don't. Other than putting the towers checkers up this week, I mean, that's my biggest.
You're driving over to that one then?
Yeah, I mean, they should be done by the time we're done here, I would assume, if done. Down there in Dow City are close. And then they were, they wanted to be up there to Charter Oak by noon. Shortly after, set up at one o'clock and the truck pull in. I think that was the plan originally, so we'll see if that's what holds up.
Good trucker should be able to back up there, get the brakes and slide her off right on the path.
You bet.
Oh, we have a crane.
Boy, I seen the pictures of that sitting there last night. Did you see how they chained that down? Boy, I hope you don't get on it. Might not stay on that sucker, I don't know. I'm sure they're pretty heavy though, like twenty-nine thousand pounds for them shelters. Probably take a little bit of breeze and blow it off. But. Have two minutes left.
Terry, what time we leaving? Wednesday next week?
I don't know, what time does it start Wednesday next week?
I'm gonna say nine.
I know.
Starts at nine?
Nine, actually.
We ain't paying for no damn breakfast.
Getting coffee, damn it. I thought Terry was bringing breakfast.
Then we can't leave very early.
Oh, the oil period, okay.
Starts Wednesday, we'll be there Wednesday night. Just Terry and I.
Thanks for going, guys. Appreciate it.
We talk about a Tuesday.
That's a two-day thing?
Yeah, one night. I think Thursday's not all day.
No, it's like. Shortly after lunch.
Yeah, I wish they'd made it one day.
Yeah, I know it.
Yeah.
I don't think they could fit it all.
They're probably thinking about people traveling in and stuff.
Start late, a little bit later, so you can travel in same day.
I always think of like Jason DeGioia from Oceola.
Yeah.
You know, he drives, that's a four-hour drive.
Good for Des Moines tourism to have the hotel school.
Yeah.
Hopefully they, they pick up some good info off of it.
Oh, Terry comes. We're, I'm ten seconds late.
Uh-oh. Uh-oh.
Nice day out there.
It looks like they might be sure.
I thought Jack was bringing the doughnut.
Well, today, wanna just take a few minutes to recognize Chris Mark. We have some, some, some firsts and some lasts, you know, first day of his retirement, last day of his work. First day of his new position, David back there is the foreman was yesterday, he flew solo for a while. And I think the solo flight went all right, so anyhow, he's, he's off and running, but we're here to recognize Chris today. We're gonna miss you, Chris. He started, yeah, he started May of eighty-eight, and he worked on the sign crew, and I couldn't tell for sure. And when that switched to the bridge crew took place, but it looked like it was in the early nineties where you. Yeah, and then, and then he went to, you were on the sign crew for a year or two, the way it looked.
Couple of years ago, I think. There was a full-time position come off.
Yeah, yeah, and he, so we went from a sign crew and bridge crew, and he, he stayed there until. Uh, March of twenty eighteen, when he took the foreman, the foreman's position, and he's been serving in that position for the last five years. Uh, Chris was one of the first certified crane operators that we have. Oh.
We've exceeded the limit.
Just a good group, you know, the, the, the bridge crews always kinda had this good chemistry. You know, there'd be times where, I know Dale White always said, he, he never would really go in the, into the shop, cause he never knew what they were making. I mean, you know, they were, they fabricated, I think, barrels that, that we use today for our lunches. Uh, they, they made trailers for our portable toilets that we use today, and a pretty creative bunch of guys. And, you know, every once in a while, if there was a nice shade tree by the, by the job site, I'd find a, a grill there about lunchtime. If you arrived about eleven thirty or so, you might be lucky enough to get a grilled hamburger or hot dog. So, good group, and have gotten a tremendous amount worth of, over the years, you know. Um, I just can't say enough about all the bridges, and Tim's carrying on that tradition for us today, and continues to, you know. Uh, Terry was a bridge crew foreman for a number of years, and he had the emblem, and, you know, and that's him. So that, that, that whole group that Chris was involved in, they've done a lot of good things for Crawford County over the years. And so I appreciate it, and I know the people in Crawford County do as well, so. So anyhow, Chris, I don't know, if you have a few stories to share, I know Terry does, he always does. But, but anyhow, you know, if you wanna offer up a few words, or, you know.
No, I just, you know, I, I really appreciate working with all you guys, you know, it's been an honor. It's been a good place to work. Don't know much else.
Yeah. Chris has always got these little criticisms, I call them. So we're driving down the hood one day, and he's on the phone with the guy, and he says, yeah, yeah, he's stuck tighter than a one-legged lizard in a large. Yeah, yeah, he's stuck tighter than a one legged lizard in a large jar. That's just one of them. Let's talk pretty good, Chris. Came up with that, but, uh, always a good demeanor, always reliable. And, uh, and always a good attitude and so fun to work with people like that. We appreciate it.
Oh, I just say if you could hire a crew of Chris's. You'd have a lot less worries. We had. He got along with everybody. We didn't have any problem with doing his job and. Just next life.
Anybody else? That's gonna make me feel bad now.
Big boost to Phil, but you're doing a good job.
Now, Chris, I mean, Chris around, you always knew that you had somebody that was, you know, you could always depend on, especially from all from the bridge crew side, it was always. If you're gonna do it, you look at Chris and Chris goes, I think so. So you think so, we can do it. So.
You really want to take that crane down that bank?
Yeah, okay. You go ahead. You would do her. But I was always good to have Chris around. Also, we built a lot of stuff that sometimes was nonsense, but it turned out that we used it. Trying for driving piling, still use that today. Now it's just a. Something on the bridge crew, if you've never been there around when we drive piling, it was just something that saved us a lot of time. Chris came up with the idea one day, just all of the blue.
My experience with Chris seemed like the bridge crew, they would never use my ideas, but when Chris thought of them, they were like. That's the dumbest thing I ever heard. Let's do that. Well, you're looking at very hard time work or?
Not right away. I've been setting alarm clock for fifty years.
You'll still wake up.
But you'll wake up on your terms though.
But one last thing, uh, you know, Terry, a lot of the guys who get there early in the morning, which is kind of neat, is just a time to. Badger each other, you know. You know, these guys are always there, always there early here before Terry retired. He was reading a book about the Lewis and Clark expedition, Undawned Courage. And Terry would come in about once a week and give us an update, a book report on what was happening with the expedition. And it was kind of neat during the winter time, but we come to find out that Chris is actually a direct descendant of. William Clark.
Cool. That's cool. We need to build an obelisk in Crawford County.
Terry, just tell us about how they came about it.
Well, my dad, he had a full time meteorologist for years and this is before the inter. And he couldn't quite connect the dots. I'm pretty sure they were related, but you know, we all, you know, they use old Bible records and military histories, something like that. But couldn't quite put it together. Our youngest son was in heritage class and they did ancestry dot com. In fifteen, twenty minutes.
Linked it up. That's real cool.
Yeah, I just wish my dad would live, woman up, you know.
That's pretty ding neat though.
That's where that one legged lizard.
When they had their kilbo stuff.
Well, Chris, I got a little fact I wanted to give you, not nearly enough, but a little recognition for, uh. For all your your thirty five years of service and we certainly do appreciate it.
Well, thank you.
Here you go. And we're gonna have lunch, but we're just gonna go do a little, Chris, you want a whole lot, other than two twelve packs or cases of. So that's be another time. But, uh, we're, uh, we're gonna have a little lunch. I can never remember the name, but it's still past times.
Sadly, I got a meeting, but I'm with it.
Hopefully that's not a work call. We got the phones all switched over, so you shouldn't be getting any work calls.
First time it's ranked.
Having all the leadership here, I'd like to say something because I I'd like to compare notes when I'm talking to other supervisors and I, you know, you guys all do an outstanding job and you know, like the bridges. You know, they're talking about cutting funding on stuff in the future and then type of things, you know, and the Republicans up on the. In the DC, you know, they're wanting to clean up the budgets and stuff so we couldn't lose more funding. So you guys having us. Light years ahead of a lot of counties that are out there that have the Hilton or the topographical terrain set that we do. So I appreciate everything you guys are doing. That's why I do try to brag about you a little bit when I get an opportunity. So thanks for everything, Chris, since you've been doing it so darn well.
Thank you, thank you.
I just want to do talk to other supervisors. We take for granted a lot of time the work that gets done out there. You know, they ask us questions. Well, I guess we just have a crew that takes care of that.
Exactly right. So we're very fortunate to have such a good team. I mean, it probably speaks a lot for Paul's leadership. I'm sure to you guys, he might be a pain sometimes, but. I'm sure your guys, you you guys are all a pain to somebody at some point when you're out there barking orders, but. You know, something that it it just shows a lot about what Crawford County is made of, you know, and and I so I appreciate what everything you're doing. Congratulations. Enjoy your retirement.
Thanks, Chris.
Thank you. I will, I will.
Nice bowl. Thanks for giving us. Yeah. Yeah, he, you know, he. Is that picture you sent me last week? I asked Troy, I said, what the heck was that about? He said them cars kept flying by. He said, I couldn't figure out how I slowed down. He said, I was even screaming and he said they weren't. He said, but I put that sign on, everybody slowed down.
I got a snap. I mean, they they had fun. Troy and bridge crew was doing patching down there on the fifty five. He's got a little science as children at play.
So it was kind of cute. It's only kind of happened in trucks that that would actually slow people down. He said it was.
Oh goodness, yeah, you got a little fun, so. Yeah, yeah. Uh, don't have a lot. I did send up a a complete set of the this is what's going out to the contractors for bid. And, you know, I was closed last week and you approved it, but I just, I thought you wanted to clean through it. You're more than welcome to. Let's take a copy and look at it. And that's what's being sent out and hopefully we'll get some interest on that. The bridge project moving right along, they should have the other abutment out today and start riding piling tomorrow. They have to do pre board holes. So by the end of the week, the second abutment should be done and place some rep rap and start getting ready to warm up the deck. So. Uh, so let's move right along. All the asphalt's down on the asphalt project except for that little bit where the railroad's at because they can't get. But they're gonna be in the area for, you know, another month and a half. So hopefully we get that all worked out. And and you know, it's just, it's just a real taking to work with the railroad. And try to get, you know, we got a permit, we got everything, but still coordinating to get the flaggers there. You know, um, so we'll see how that works out. But anyhow, they got almost all the shoulder material down at the end of the day today as well. I don't know why they're doing it. I can't, I can't direct how they do the work. I just have to direct the results. They're putting down eighty to ninety percent of the shoulder material. And then they're gonna come back and finish it off. It's odd. So if you go out and you look at it, it doesn't look very good. It doesn't look like it's finished. It's not.
Be like going out and spraying half my chemical, spray the other half.
Hey, you know, anyhow, I again, I can't control that. So I think, you know, next sort of plan, you know, this is why specifications and things get lengthier. Because you see this, it's like, that's not really how we want it done. We want you to do it all at one time, do it, you know. And the result probably be close to the same, but it's a lot better if you just do it all at one time and we can't direct that. If you want to dribble a little out, come back and dribble a little more. I can't, I can't change.
That kind of interrupts all your operations though.
Well, we have to pay for extra flaggers and extra pilot cars because they have to come back. You know, so there's a cost to us, but we can't. We can't control method. End results only. Anyhow, uh, but nonetheless, it's going really, really well. If you drive the road, I think it drives really nice. On that curve, there are a few little bumps. What happens is is the the joint sealing material warms up and the asphalt hits it. Hindsight, we probably should have skimmed that just a little bit, milled just a little bit off of that, got rid of that stuff. It's not bad. You know, it's actually much, much worse than that, but that's what's going on there. Nothing wrong with the pavement. I think it'll eventually kind of work its way out.
It'll settle in after.
Get some heat in the summer and, you know.
Come the summer to.
It it it's still probably gonna be a little bit there, but that's what happened. We either should have put two lifts on it, a little scratch course. What you got is that that what happens is that where that joint or that crack was sealed. Does that reheats and as a roller hits it, it starts to, you know, it's liquid. Okay, it starts to push it and as it starts to smear and then it dries out. But anyhow, it's just that curve up there.
I think you're gonna save some money, you know, trying to save.
Yeah, you're trying not to do that. I take responsibility for that because I know that happens. And, uh, yeah, so they, you know, that's ninety ninety five percent done. You gotta add a little bit of shoulder material, put the paper markings down. So they're trying to. So that that's good, you know, the project didn't get drug out, you know, so you know, them coming back is we we had that project in twenty seventeen, took five months, you know. And so, you know, just on and on and on. We paid for a ton of flaggers and pilot cars we probably shouldn't have to pay for. And so here, you know, they really compacted it if they are gonna come back and that'll go far. I have to interview worried about it.
Okay.
Great crew, they're down at two ninety street. They're putting top slow back on. That'll be our second grade, second mile when you're done.
Look like they moved a lot of dirt. I mean, they're like moving fast.
Yeah, yeah, they are. It's good lunch, you know, they're gonna go up to E Avenue. It's just east of thirty nine there, east of the lakes. That line on there. So that that's been needed for a while and now the lakes on that, or no conservation, I think owns that. Conservation. So that'll be graded up and nice access to that.
Good.
And then Bridge Crew, they're down there by Dan Checkers on Rainbow Trust. It's turned out really good.
How much longer do you think they have?
Uh, they'll be close to being done by the end of the week. So, um. Seeding, tea is going well. We're gonna they'll start mowing next week, uh, before Memorial Day, so they'll be mowing, seeding and start spraying. Going well there. Uh, we did new interviews. We made an offer to a gentleman for the Ricketts moderator position and Elliot Cook. Anyhow, uh. He, uh, he lives in the Charter Oak area.
Facebook stuff.
Yeah, I talked to a couple of people. They had a pretty good recommendation, so.
I like to put a face to the name when I say I'm.
Yeah, yeah, so.
Are we?
Yeah, he's really on the west side area. Yeah, so. Cool. Yeah, I think he's seems like a good worker.
Them you can work with. You can teach them if they work.
It seems like we have, um, just like today, Chris retired and we lose a lot of knowledge and experience, but you've always had the next ones jump right in that.
Yep.
Pick up and and just take right off and do a good job as well.
Yeah, Terry Lally said a long time ago, hire for attitude, train to do the job.
Well, that's a good saying.
Exactly right.
It is, you know, and.
That's what I tell my son all the time. We're gonna grow our own.
Yeah, yeah, so, um, so that's.
Make sure you get a plant that can grow.
Yeah, but anyhow, then we'll be working on the down city position here next week or so. Uh, the meeting tonight, city. Okay.
Is it? Unfortunately, our two things.
Sorry.
Once here and once down here.
Which one's first?
Bridge.
Good. But this is what I'm gonna share with them, you know.
Yeah.
It's the letter. It's the letter from the UP saying, hey, who wants to enter into this agreement? You have to do that before we move forward and kind of my breakdown. This is a very general, you know, the numbers aren't gonna be half a million and they're not gonna be a hundred thousand. Okay, so that's just kind of the best way I can characterize. It's kind of in the range for both of us, so, you know, you know, nobody's looking at that as gossip.
Uh, that will be number nine on an agenda with thirty items on it.
Yeah.
And your other item is number twenty seven.
All the ones that I've talked to, they actually appreciate your experience and help on this.
Yeah, yeah, well. You know, it's. It it, you know, you're looking out for the good of all Crawford County. That's the way I look at it. Okay, and if we can, if we can help and bring something to the table that helps move that along. We'll help out with it. So, so that's good. So, uh, the mail a shot.
Yeah, I was passing that around.
We'll see what happens. If you know of somebody, do you think you know a builder? I don't know if you're, uh, it's a steel building, you know, you don't do steel in New York, but. But anyhow, if you know some contractor, you think, you know, I'd be interested in it, let us know. So trying to reach out to the ones that we can think of. Lyden, Lyden and Arnold's and Jensen have done the ones that we've done so far.
I had Zimmerman down at, I think Neola did Rod Kuntz's steel building.
Okay, Zimmerman.
Boy, don't even sell. Yeah, Craigel, that was last week.
That that may sound, I think we sent one of them. Zimmerman's out of where?
I think Neola.
Yeah, just try to get the word out to as many as possible, so.
Is there a deadline on that?
Yeah, I think it's June thirteenth, I think you said. Yeah, June thirteenth. So they got about, they got a month. Should be twenty time.
Yeah, I need a mega huge building.
No, no.
Tall ones, level.
You got a number for me?
Got this this morning.
Okay, yeah, thank you. Yeah, if you want to go, let me know.
I'm gonna be gone that day. I'm gonna be gone that day.
Okay, so so you won't be like, oh, there you go.
I already sent an email back to John.
If you ever want to go, just let me know, you know. Okay. Well, that's. We're gonna take it down.
You guys are gonna take it down?
Yeah, yeah. And we kind of kicked around maybe trying to leave some of the concrete building our salt, sand bin, you know, right near fuel concrete. Ready to get the new one built.
See what you got.
But that building is not very good shape.
You know what they do with the concrete from the old crunks?
I wish I knew. I drove by there and it was all said it was gone. I should have, you know, I should have wheeled in there and found out who that was that's doing it.
I don't know who.
It's him. He's taking it, you know, keeping it himself, but I don't know who's doing it.
Leon Felk keeps it?
Yeah, he take, because he keeps any of that that he gets crushed itself. But it's a cat excavator. I don't know that he has a cat excavator like that. But it's a cat excavator, I don't know that he has a cat excavator like that.
I don't know either, she just, I thought I said. He was wandering around with a chain.
But you know what, if he's gonna. I heard a rumor that you're gonna leave all the crunks too, that would be great. We said, I think we said they had plans or a notice. So what we do. Is, uh, some next generation building.
A little sentimental value.
What we do is we send out what's called a notice to bidders, just a sheet, one page sheet, say, hey, if you want plans, here's the details, here's the general outline. You want plans, let us know, we're not gonna set those packets up to everybody, we wanna make sure that they're interested.
See Paul, I did have a question.
Nice detailed package. Very good job.
On the V O T construction of the bridges that they're doing here today. How much communication do they do to the local counties, do they communicate to you like your schedule?
Uh, you know, we didn't, we didn't get a, you know, we weren't invited to pre-con on that, that I'm aware of, but, uh. You know, there'll be conversations at the tack meeting, you know, they, Schultz will give an update, say, hey, we're gonna be working on these bridges. So I know that they're gonna be working on the two bridges over the railroad in twenty twenty-five, that's the tentative schedule. You know, and that's about the same timeframe that we were looking at, if we, if that works, you know, everybody's moves forward, so. So there's some communication, but probably. Probably not, you know, it's. Lot of times they used to invite us to the pre-construction conference, but still, you know, hey, we're having a pre-construction conference, you wanna come, you're welcome to. At least then we know what's going on. You know, that, hey, the project's gonna start, timing that, everything, I. So no, not a, not.
Okay, anybody else?
Thank you.
If you guys wanna look it over, when you're done with it, just, just drop it off, and I'll, uh.
Any contractors asked, just tell them to get ahold of your office for the design plans.
So, Paul, it's a steel building, so, you know, there's only certain guys that are gonna be the general on that, and they would sub out concrete. Electrical and all that stuff, so, um, Sealer, Harry, Tom, I, he kinda reviewed my electrical.
Did he?
You know, and, and the only recommendation he had was on lighting, which is really important, you know, kinda gave me the direction to put in there for the lights that we're gonna put in it, so.
You know, and I've known mine actually, cuz my livestock triggers to see inside when you're working on them, and so I put lights on the side walls even.
Yeah, these are a high bay light, L E D fixture that should light it up like they like.
Be good, cost effective, we like that, save energy.
Very good question, thank you, so, okay, thank you, Paul.
Thanks, Paul. All right, next on the agenda. If I can find it. Louise, I believe you're up, Matt. Or V A director.
Sorry, without a time on the agenda, I wasn't sure when you needed me. Stuck to that anyway, that's true, so.
I just have a few quick things, um, first, this is just something really, the hospital started this because we asked them. Ida County had this information sheet that they would give elderly people, usually on hospice, to put on their refrigerator. So that if E M Ts ever came to their house, they would have all the information they needed. We're at a health fair, well, we, in Ida County, and we asked about it, and Kelly goes, well, we thought about that, but they came up with this sheet. And they don't want it just on the refrigerator, cuz when you have your friends over, you don't need them to see your stuff, so they came up with the idea of red envelopes. And we magnetized them, our office has done three hundred, and the hospital is doing some, and in it is this information sheet. So you fill it out, now, our county, because we're more progressive than Ida probably, um, the thought of our hospital is, anybody that takes medication. Or has a medical allergy should have this on their refrigerator, all the E M Ts in the county know to look at a refrigerator for a red envelope. So one per person, I brought you guys some, I have more in my office, we're getting them out to all of our veterans, Legion posts and things like that. So if you all would take as many as you want, one per person, or one per person in the household. And even, they said even kids, if you have a son or daughter that is diabetic, that's little, grandma and grandma, baby, saying they may not know every little thing. And so it's just easy that way, they're not hopefully going to be giving anybody things that, um, will counteract with what they have.
That's pretty cool.
Yeah, and if you have a lot, and, and you know, take them for your neighbors, whoever, um. Because, and if you have a lot of medications, the clinic and the doctors will print out your med list for you.
Jim gets more ambulance calls anyway.
So, yeah, so it's just, it's really kind of, and I, I really, um, it's kind of one of my new little passion projects. Because we've all been in those situations, hopefully we'll never need it, but, yeah.
I have more old friends than anybody else here.
You and me both, they're my peeps, but, and the senior center. I took my box of envelopes magnets and sheets to the senior center, and we sat there for an hour and a half with all the ladies around the table. And we laughed and had such a good time, and they stuffed and magnetized all these envelopes, and, yeah. So anyway, so if you need more, and we do have extra sheets, so if you make boo-boos or things change, you can just pop in, I can, these, we just print out. Online, so, I laminated one for the office, so I wouldn't be screwing them all up.
So for husband and wife, I see that they just use one envelope with two.
No, I would do, they want separate envelopes and put your name on it, his and hers, I think. I kind of put a few little stickers online, cuz I made the joke that I was gonna bedazzle mine.
Yeah, of course.
So, you know, yeah.
I'll bedazzle my sort of north from Jersey.
And so that way it's just easy, they can pull yours off, and just yours are not looking through, and it's kind of nice, cuz if nobody's there with you. It has your contact information, or if you should, they should call somebody, so. Yeah, so it's kind of fun, you know, we like to partner with other agencies in the county, so, um. Yes, if you do.
Be nice if they could have a copy of.
They have to.
Even though it says they do, but if the E M Ts do not see that, they cannot.
Right, and thank you for saying that, because we've been putting that out to everybody, and usually I tell everybody, if you have a D N R, a copy of the signed D N R by your doctor. Has to be in the envelope, or they will do all life-saving measures. You can't just say I have a D N R, that doesn't work. Yeah, so meanwhile, back to, to my real job of V A, and I should be a copy for you, Terry, come on. Um, the end of the year G V X report came out, and that is the report from the V A that breaks down per state and per county, how much money comes in at different programs. The fiscal year for the federal department is different than ours, obviously, they go, what, October first to September thirty, so. The front side, this is the report I give to my commission every month, it's an ongoing report. We get a report from Des Moines every month that breaks our money down per month, and this is what I use to gauge how well I'm doing in my job. And it's usually a little behind, like any day now, I should be getting the April report, but it breaks it down, compensation is money for, um, injuries or illnesses. Occurred or attributed to the service, so it'd be like the Agent Orange presumptives, if you fell and broke a hip, whatever. Um, life pension, that's for our veterans pension, those are usually individuals in a nursing home. Um, D I C is, um, death compensation, that is a widow or widower of a veteran who died of a service-connected disability. One of my favorite programs, and that also, if you're on D I C or a hundred percent compensation permit in total, that gets you a hundred percent of your property tax. Which you'll notice a nice increase, cuz we've had a really good couple of months. And survivor pension, um, those are for widow or widowers of wartime veterans, and those are usually individuals, so they're all in a nursing home. And if you know of somebody that's in a nursing home, and I haven't been notified that they're there, if they're, if they're on Medicaid. If they're eligible due to the wartime, you have to have one day in a wartime period, then you only get to keep fifty dollars of your social security for spending money during the month. But the V A will come in with comment, with pension and give you an extra ninety dollars, so. Doesn't sound like a lot, but you know, when you need to get your hair done, and you might have a cell phone bill or something, that ninety dollars is really, is, makes a, bit of difference. So, we bring in about three hundred and forty thousand dollars a month in cash, and that's all money. That goes directly tax-free federal and state to our veterans and their dependents. So on the backside of that form is the G V X report, and you notice, I like my statistics, so I have it all the way back. Um, to where I started in ninety-six, and I just add to it every year. Um, back in ninety-six, we had sixteen hundred veterans, this year they came in for fiscal year twenty-two, thinking we only have eight hundred and nine. So we have decreased, and that's mostly due to our World War II veterans. Um, but remember, those are only veterans who own property in the county, so anybody that rents is in a nursing home and has sold their property. Widows, that does not include all the dependents that we serve as well, so, us in the county, we think our numbers are probably pretty much double. Cuz not everybody owns property anymore, a lot of people, you know, sell their house or deed it over to the kids early. G V X is gross distributional report, I think, or expenditures. Yeah, and I'm sorry, cuz I, I know it's like the.
Gross distribution.
Expenditures, like every department that has money, I guess, in the government gets one. Um, so last year with medical care included, well, I usually just look at this first full total, because that's the cash. So, three hun- three million seven hundred and sixty-eight thousand came in, in monthly compensation and retroactive checks to our veterans. In Crawford County, I told you, I had the best return of investment, I can tell you, this is why I get, I get excited about numbers. Guys already heard this, cuz he made the mistake of coming into my office the day it came. Um, and then this medical care, that is like at the Omaha V A, the Carroll Clinic, all of that, and that's around three million. So our total is over seven million a year, and I look at, if you start looking at like two thousand and twelve and thirteen. That's when regionalization, the process started, and you will notice that we stayed pretty well stagnant and had a few declines in there. And that's when my time was so taken away from the veterans, and so now I'm catching up, and so it's been kind of exciting. And the last one I added on today, this, I've never showed you this one, because I never did it until this year, because. I have time to do it, and it's exciting, I give this one to my commission every year, or every month. And this is my running, uh, just of claims that have been awarded or came back favorably. Um, we've had a few that were denied, and pretty much I knew they would be, so, so far since July first, we have our month. Now, this is in addition to what comes in, so these are just the new claims, our new amounts coming in, sixty-nine thousand a month. And so far, our, um, retroactive totals are at two hundred and forty-five thousand came in since July. This probably is not complete, because I changed systems, remember, back in November. And my old system did not track all of this as well as the new, so I had to kind of go back and try and remember who was in the office after July and add them manually in here. And I know I forgot some people, um, but we've had, um, if you see ones that are over three thousand, those are a hundred percent veterans. So we've had one, two, three, four, five, six, seven, eight, nine, ten. We've had about ten hundred percent claims come through this year, which is huge, that's, usually if we get one a year, I, I get excited, so.
You got one that's four thousand, what's the difference, I mean, I, three, three ninety-five, I mean, that's kind of a steady number there, so I assume that's generally your.
This is, um, actually, he is a, um, that was completely new, he was denied for years cuz he was air force in Thailand. And then when they added Thailand to the presumptives for Agent Orange, I called him in, cuz he was in my mind, and said, we need to apply. And so he has, he was rated eighty percent just for being diabetic, cuz he has neuropathy and upper and lower. And then they rated his heart at a hundred percent standalone, so anytime you have a bilateral condition, like both of your arms affected or both of your legs, you get kickers. Um, if you have loss of use of a creative organ, dysfunction, you get extra money, so he has a lot of kickers, cuz he is very sick. So if you see those big totals, you don't wanna be that person, people think, oh my god, they give them too much money, you know what, none of us wanna live their lives.
Years he lived with that, and they.
They denied it because he wasn't, they, in Thailand, wasn't on the presumptuous for Agent Orange, now it is.
So he's struggling all these years, and nobody's helping, and then all of a sudden they realize it, and so they give him a little summary?
Yeah, he, well, if they went back, anybody that applies between now and August, it'll go back to the last change of August, so. He had, um, his retroactive, it says fourteen, it was a little bit more than that, because they did his in stages, and I didn't add them all together, he's probably more like thirty. I kind of get lazy sometimes, and. They, they rated him at eighty, then the hundred came in, then it added on his spouse, which gives him more money, so he had three retroactive checks. And I didn't add all three of them together.
What does the asterisk mean then?
The asterisk is my little note, and that means that they already had some money coming in from the V A, and they had an increase. So, that, so not all of that, like, on, if you see a thirty-nine, fifty-two, hundred percent. Um, that veteran could have been like maybe fifty percent before, and getting a little over a thousand dollars, so not all of that is new money.
So, just to, to pick one up. They had a claim in, I assume that was nineteen seventy-one, uh, B R down there.
Oh, I, I, I did a goofy, no, that was probably, um, twenty twenty-one, and I got a new keyboard yesterday. And it's different shape, I'm not typing very well these days. That'd be twenty twenty-one probably.
Well, I was, I was thinking, gosh, you had a claim in.
Yeah, no, actually, that was actually twenty twenty-two, he was decided pretty quickly. No, once in a blue moon, they will go back pretty far, if they had applied before, but. But, and right now, I counted, we had about sixty-four pending claims still with the V A, and I did have one, a small ten percent come through this morning. That's not on here, cuz I wasn't gonna reprint everything for ten percent, so, um. Yeah, I'm sorry, I'm, I'm gonna fix that, give it to my commission. Lewayne will spot it, he's my, he's my number person, he will spot that, so.
I think keeping you around and, and having you full-time now is paying dividends for our veterans and our county.
You know, it is, and you have to remember, and Ty and I have talked about this, um. I would say eighty percent of our veterans that are on this list, they spend all their money here, they're not veterans that, I have a few that are snowbirds, I go to Florida, not many. But they buy their cars here, they, they just, they don't, especially our Vietnam veterans, they're not the big ones to go to Omaha and do a lot of shopping and stuff. And, um, so it all, what did they say, it circulates so many times in the county, so just, yeah. It's a really, it's a really good deal, and we've been seeing a lot of younger veterans with the bird pits, with that, um, being added in and stuff, which is, that's exciting for me. They're finally starting to come in and file their claims, where before they just really didn't want to, they weren't ready, it took them a while, just kind of like Vietnam, you know. But it's easier to do it now than wait fifty years, when they can't find you anymore on your records and all that stuff, so.
Well, I will tell you that when I'm, and I don't mean to throw extra work at you, but when I'm out with the writers in particular, people know that we're kind of in Crawford County area. So they'll ask, well, how, you know, they, they're having trouble finding this, and you know, you do a great job of helping veterans, period. You know, I mean, I, and I know you can direct them to their people, because sometimes they just don't know their people.
Right, and that's true, and I have to admit, and, um, with our new system, I can do things remotely. So I have two veterans that work for some construction company, they live here, but they're in Kansas, they both had claims pending, if I need to do forms. I talk to, on the phone, I even, it gets emailed to them, they docu-sign it, within a minute, it pops back in my computer signed, I hit a button, it goes straight to my computer to the V A. So they're not having to wait like back in the day, where they'd have to get up here to file their claims, so we're getting things done, um, and I do have. Probably four or five more that could be on this list, but they live in other counties, but they, they were from our guard unit and grew up here, and I keep them. And so, um, one had some very bad advice from a new service officer in Guthrie County, not many names. And he lives in Jamaica, never known anybody to live in Jamaica, Iowa, but he does, and, um, cause Jamaica, Iowa, you always see the sign. Yeah, and his brother lives here, and his brother said, can he call you, because he's having problems, and I'm like, of course, so actually he gave me the number, I called him. And his new service officer, bless her heart, I'm not her training officer, so, cuz they're not in our district, but I'm kind of wanna talk to her. She told him he can only apply for one thing at a time, and this is a guy who had been deployed probably four or five times. He has probably, I would say at least twelve items, and she applied for hearing loss first, that is the least of his issues. So I kind of, I turned it over to our district president to talk to their district president, and we did some things remotely to get him going. Because if he files one by one, it's gonna take him six years, cuz it's taking eight months or longer for a claim to go through now at the V A, so. I, he was frustrated, he has B T S D, and I just had, kind of had to let him go for a few minutes, and then till it's out, and we're like, we can take care of this, it's not. A problem on our side. We'll do that. Because if you're from Crawford County, you're, you know, I'm territorial.
You are.
I'm territorial. Now, there are some, maybe I wouldn't be, but for the most part, as long as they're getting what they want, that we're making sure that she is trained. And I'm like, well, she isn't on the training. We were all out a few weeks ago. This is, this is not good. Um, legislation that went through for VA, the only thing that went through. I haven't checked it out, but everything's changed. They did increase the military tax exemption for property tax from what, like a thousand and something up to four thousand. So you'll see a little bit of change on your. Um, property tax. It's the first time it's been adjusted since like nineteen fifty three or something like that. So they're very happy about that.
I don't think it's till the twenty three assessment. So it won't be on this bill. I don't.
No, it is. It's retroactive. They were starting it sooner, I think. I'm not sure though. Cause there was a lot of like hoo-ha. And, um, the tax fund about that. But I don't understand how taxes work. So, but they said it was going to be effective July first. So I don't know what that means as far as we just see it under check. Um, our legislation to clean up chapter thirty five that governs VA and. The House passed it in a heartbeat and it stalled in the Senate because they're not wanting to deal with, I guess, veteran stuff this year. And all it did was, was a cleaner fill if he was a veteran. We have a veteran who was National Guard, never deployed, but had a trading accident. He, he's on here as a hundred percent now. He cannot get the free property tax, because in the state of Iowa, he is not recognized as a veteran. Where federally he is. So we need to get the state version of what a veteran is and a federal. Cause National Guard, if you weren't deployed, you're technically not a veteran for federal purposes. But if you become service connected, that makes you into that count. So, and he doesn't care. He's excited. He's getting, you know, a nice big check, but he should have the property tax like everybody else. So we're a little disappointed in that one. Um, and then it also had some teeth to it that if you are a service officer. And you don't get your, if they're going to make it mandatory that we all have our federal process, which is not an easy process to go through. Um, and you don't put it in your computer to access the national, the national VA system. The state would have teeth to come in to you as a board of supervisors and a VA commission and say, your service officer is not demonstrating that they can do their job. You need to replace that person or they need to do it. And that needs to be done to eliminate these things where people are getting some bad advice.
Right.
And another fellow county adjoining us that.
Doesn't get in service well.
Yeah.
Actually, when I was at my, I had an appointment yesterday and my nurse gave you an indirect compliment. She said to me, she said, well, you need to do this and stuff on, she said, you need to see your VSO. What county are you? I said Crawford. And she, oh, well, you're fine.
Well, I know which nurse that was and her father lives in an adjoining county and I did his claim for her. Because his county told him he wasn't eligible when it was. And that's what we're picking up with is people that are seat fillers. And those days are over. We're a professional office. We have to have more training than most offices. No, you know. We have to be nationally accredited. That's the only part that's in chapter thirty five, is that you have to have your national certification, but it doesn't do you any good if you're not using it.
Well, after a twenty year war, I would say that we're probably in need of VSOs that are competent and capable like you are.
And it's really kind of fun, because, you know, I was the youngest in the state forever, forever the youngest person. I am not the youngest anymore. I think Irene has retired. So now I am like the most senior, have the most tenure in office. Even Joni Ernst made fun of me. I've been called blessed at training. They always have everybody stand up and, you know. Now, if you've been here five years, sit down ten years. And when you're the last one standing, it's like you're the butt of everybody's jokes. Um, um. Um, the general, General Orr said, she's, I'm long in the two, according to the National Guard General. And I'm like, okay, I can take that one in the two.
A general will do that. And that's kind of like.
When was that law change? Louise, was that back in the eighteen hundreds? We did that, you know, those type of things. But it's really exciting to see counties are not hiring retired people like they used to. Crawford County was really forward thinking when we started this. You know, but now they're starting with younger veterans that are, I would say, a lot in their twenties still. And they have a lot of energy. They're bringing a lot of enthusiasm. That helps all of us. Yeah. So the days of just filling a chair to have an office to say you meet the law is not working anymore. But we have lots of counties. Unfortunately, one next door to us that needs to get on board with that. And that's.
And you'll pet their supervisors.
Yeah. So anyway, so that's everything. And if you guys, oh, and I have poppies downstairs. I just didn't bring them up. So if you need, oh, and stop by and see my TV outside my office if you haven't.
I will.
Um, one of our veterans has named a cable channel, Wheezy. And on it now is we have, I haven't changed it today, but we have to bring it up for Memorial Day, every day coming up to Memorial Day. And yesterday I put up the slides for each ward who we lost this year, as far as veterans and National Guard and peacetime. So. Yeah, we've lost, I think, thirty two veterans this year. It's the lowest we've had in a long time. But no World War Two veterans passed away last year. We have five left.
I gotta say, we don't have a lot left.
Our oldest is going to be a hundred. He just moved into Dentistry and Care Center. So we'll need to do a little something for him in July. So since Bob Glauw passed away, he would be the oldest. So that's Doc Schmidt from Buswig. So we'll have to do a little something for Doc to perk him up. So, yeah. And oh, the twenty second, I think, is that a Wednesday, is Memorial Day at the Reed Place. If anybody wants to come up, they're gonna. We're gonna do some fun things up there.
One day.
I think it's the twenty second. It's next Wednesday. Um, I can't read that little tiny print this by that way, but. Um, yeah, or whatever that Wednesday, I think it's Wednesday. It's at like twelve forty five.
It's Wednesday, May twenty fourth.
That might be it. Or maybe it's the twenty third. No, maybe it's on Tuesday, the twenty third. I think it's the twenty third.
Okay.
That sticks out in my mind.
What, what time is it?
Okay, well, we have, I will let you guys know. I will let you know for sure. I know I have it on my calendar downstairs and.
You tell us too soon, we'll forget. So.
Yeah, and there is a twelve forty five. I know that much because. So anyway, so that's everything. If you need anything, come down. But stop by and see our TV. One of my veterans said we need to have a duplicate screen on the second floor. So while they're waiting for their driver's license and stuff, they have something to recall. Jake.
He just happens to be here. Jerry, you want a couple of these?
Jake, just in case you didn't have something going on.
Thank you.
Or whoever you want to do.
Sure.
Thank you, man. Appreciate all that you're doing. Thanks. I always love her passion. Okay, next on the agenda is the city center IT server. Jake, if you'd like to please come up.
Good morning.
So if a hundred percent of her budget come from the federal government?
No. County taxes.
That's us.
We, are we pay that full, the full amount, the seven?
We don't pay those.
That's all.
Right.
That's all.
But we pay her budget.
Her budget, yeah.
Yeah, that comes from the federal government.
This, this money, what I was asking, this is all federal money.
Yeah, that's all federal money. That is.
Directly out to.
To our benefits.
But right, her.
For salivating the budget, all expenses.
That's all county.
Yeah.
We pay her to facilitate.
And there's a lot of ten to thirty, forty percenters that she don't have on this list. There, there's a lot of them in our county. So I mean, there's quite a few federal dollars roll in through to the ACs.
So, um, submitted the request for proposal to you guys last Friday. I don't know, have you guys reviewed it and looked at it? Um, there's only, okay, good deal. Um, there's only two things that were brought to my attention by the county attorney. Um, and one that was myself on the trace of, I highlighted it in red. That you guys probably saw in the, in that was the references portion. Um, is that something that really we need or we think we should leave it in there as, as, as is? So I was like, if all's I'll do is I'll just turn it to black and communicate to you and submit with the, the RFP. Or do we want to just omit it altogether? It's, it's, it's requesting three references from the, um, the offerer regarding.
Bitter?
Yeah.
What did Colin say about that?
Um, he didn't get, he didn't say either way. Um, he, I submitted it to him and he just, he didn't make any notes or anything on, on either end on that, on that specific item. But the second item in there, if there's nothing, any issues with that, three references.
I mean, is that been a problem with bidders in the past, that you've got a bid and you've wanted to accept it, but you didn't have any references and you accepted it anyway and you weren't happy or?
Well, I, my, why, why is there? Why is there? I, I think it was just, we were just looking at it as a safeguard that, okay, these guys are reputable. They've provided, you know, instances where they've done similar work. Is what it comes down to.
I was just wondering if you can just request that if you feel like it's necessary.
Right.
If you're not familiar with a bidder, you can just say, hey, send me two or three references if they're common local bidders. I mean, I'd be.
You could almost omit that out of the packet. And then if we have that concern, ask for it.
Yep. And, and there's, there's a blurb in there about that as far as, you know, asking for more information. So. Um, but the main, so I don't necessarily think, so I'll, I'll leave that omitted then from the, the RFP. Um, the second one is, is probably a little bit more prudent is, and I'm looking for a decision here regarding if we want to go with a bonded. Um, offer or someone that's insured. Um, column referenced, um, if they, if we want to go the insurance option. We have them submit a declarations page to prove of insurance. So I just don't know the values regarding the bonded side of it. So.
That would cover just the construction or?
Yes.
All your IT equipment type things get damaged?
There's not really any, there's no IT equipment involved.
In the RFP, right?
But yeah, this, this is all pure construction with the exception of the gen- generator. So, um. But I, I think, you know, having at least something in there, maybe, maybe the declarations page, I think. Yeah, and insured. I think that would probably be a, a.
Make sure your insurance covers what you're after during construction because.
Yep.
You know, they're.
Your bond's going to, you know, take care of the, that he get, that they get it done. Because if they decide to walk away from the project and.
As a construction bond, you bet. Okay.
You should do both.
And if you're a reputable, uh, contractor, that's not a big deal.
Actually, the price of it, act, the bond you generally becomes part of their bid, actually.
It usually does.
Right.
So it makes sure that you got some kind of leverage in case they walk away from a project.
Right, right. That's what your bond will do for you.
And, and that's where I'm kind of in unfamiliar territory. So I'm asking for a little bit of guidance. Um, on like, and, and is there a specific value that we want them bought through just the entire project itself then?
Let's say the entire project. Because at this point in time, you don't know where, where it's at. So.
Right. And it won't be an expensive bond for this project.
Okay, okay. So, okay. Yeah, those are, those are the two main things I needed to kind of address before sending it out to the public. Um, I'll be going around tomorrow, um, kind of dropping this off at the, the local guys here. So they have visibility on it. It'll also be posted on the website. And, um, we'll probably need to post it in the paper too for a couple of weeks. So, okay. Just, just make sure I didn't step on toes here. So, okay. But, um, any, did you guys have any qu- additional questions about?
I'd say you only have to post it one week, because if they don't have it by the thirtieth, they're not going to be able to attend the walkthrough. So that's required to bid. So.
Okay. Multiple weeks. Okay. And I, I'm, I'm just throwing this idea out there. Okay. Just something for you guys to stew upon a little bit is that. I mean, I understand that we want to get this done immediately and quickly, but we're not really allowing, you know. Our, our, you know, our offerer a lot of time to really get his ducks in a row and prepare. So, um. I'm a little bit concerned about maybe getting, possibly getting bids that quickly. So, um, just something to throw out there, but.
How long do you think they would need?
Well, I mean, they would need at least, I, I would say, you know, to coordinate, you know. Like, I'm assuming they have their own little pool of like electric con- electric contractors, plumbers, you know, HVACs, but they got to coordinate with those people. To, you know, to make sure this can get done the right way. I mean, I would argue that maybe. The thing about it is, I know when we get into the third week of June, because I think it's the second week of June is when I have a conference to attend. So that makes a little, makes things, kind of puts a wrench in things. Um. I could see, you know, maybe just an additional week, just to allow them to get things prepared before we do the walkthrough. So they're at least aware of it. Cause right now we're only spearheading the contracts. I guess you're looking at her, what you're saying.
I'm just kind of sitting here. It, it, this isn't a huge project and a lot of these guys are building buildings from the ground up and getting it done. I just hate to proponent, is there a way we can just have a clause that we reserve the right to extend it if we don't get any in?
We, we do have something like that where we can adjust the timeline within the RFP itself. I'm just making sure that we're, you know. I don't want to go off the gate and say, oh, we automatically got to make an adjustment to it. So.
Knowing what we know from our last one, you know, we had it out there and we got done this.
Right.
You know, and we, at that time, you know, kind of wish we could have maybe, but what was wrong with that RFP needed to actually be fixed. We, you know, so. If you have a good RFP, um.
Theoretically, yes.
Theoretically.
Yeah.
If you're interested in the job, you, you get offered a job and you spend that evening, get your stuff, we call you people and. Uh, you know, the longer you procrastinate on it, or the longer you put it off, but they're going to wait to the day before, you know, it's not like, uh. So if you're too busy even getting an RFP, how are you going to figure out a time to come in and do the job? So I, I need to cut my.
Run a weekend, you know, we got nobody extended.
I can't, I need to shoot ourselves in the foot to go through all of this and, yeah, so I.
Yeah, like I said, this is just, I'm voicing a concern here and, and then we can move on.
Well taken, absolutely well taken. That's why, uh, with the, over date recommendation.
Okay, okay. So, all right. Um, so the pleasure of this board is to approve this RFP as is then, um, oh, excuse me, not as is. I've got, I got to make a correction with the bonded and insurance portion of it. So, um. And then, do, is there, do we want to go another round? Are you going to bring it before you again after that?
I think we can make the motion with them corrections mentioned.
Okay. And then, and then I'll proceed and, um, I'll let it, um, we'll publish tomorrow on it. So as far as put it on the website and that's when I'll start looking around to the, uh.
Mr. Chair, I'll make the motion to approve the RFP to go out with the corrections. May.
We got a motion made by Mr. Mobauer, decided by Mr. Dozar. Do we have any further discussion? Hearing none. All in favor, say, state so by saying aye.
Aye, aye.
Oppose nay, chair votes aye. Thank you.
Yep. Um, I'm going to, this has nothing to do with the RFP. I'm just throwing it on your guys' radar a little bit. Um, there was a request last week. Uh, about posting these meetings up to YouTube.
There we go.
Um, I have done that. Okay. Uh, I'm still, I'm putting the final touches on uploading them. They are there. They are not published.
Okay.
Um, I will not publish without the approval of the board. Okay?
So, what does publish mean?
Publish means available to everybody. Okay? They are just sitting out there right now, not available to anybody. All, the old ones, okay?
Going how far back?
Uh, so, I mean, we're a little bit hit and miss when we start getting, you know, the further we go back. The oldest one, I believe, is in GM.
That's plenty far, because they had a newspaper up until.
Yeah, we had a newspaper, yeah. We're just trying to cover the fact that we don't have a newspaper.
I say go ahead.
We got permission to publish it because they're public, public hearing.
I think that's an actionable item as far as maybe publishing that, that function. That's why I'm holding off on that. I didn't. It's not on the agenda. That's why I'm.
We don't take action for the minutes ago on the paper. I mean, I might approve the papers, but.
I don't see how it would be need to take, I don't personally feel we need to take any action on it, because if we don't, never been. You publish the shot there, videotape it, and then put it on.
Right.
In a way, we're keeping the public from the information that they just had a right to have.
Well, we don't have the re- radio or the newspaper here.
I'd rather put it out there and say you need to take action than not put it out there.
I don't know who would tell us if we.
Right.
Yeah.
So exactly how is the public find that?
I'm going to put a link in our website.
Link in the website.
Yep. And that should.
Where?
Where? Um, I'm thinking almost on the main page or at least the board supervisors.
Links wherever you get the supervisors, where you click on us and you can link the.
Yeah, yeah.
So there, that's the location that it's going to be. The other question that I have that kind of, kind of goes hand in hand with this is. Are you guys interested in doing live streaming on YouTube for us?
Don't bother me anymore.
Don't bother me.
Oh, I mean, as, as the meeting's going.
Carol knows that.
What's the point of doing the live streaming when it's?
Well.
Well, right, you're already on Zoom.
We're already on Zoom.
You're on, but I mean.
Because if, if it's live streaming, do they have to, how do they interact in the meeting when it's live streaming on YouTube?
They don't really. That's the kicker. Um, but I mean, they could still see it. And then if they have, I guess, if they have.
Right. So I mean, if you can't interact, I don't see the point of doing live.
A lot of people don't interact. They just want to listen in and.
Right. So they can do that after the fact.
Yep. And then, then they could come in.
Or, or Zoom it live. Or, or Zoom mid-live.
And like, will you do it the same day, that afternoon?
Yeah, well, I mean, live would be, you know, immediate.
But I'm talking about like the recording.
Oh, the recording, um.
I mean, obviously, if you're not here that day, it's gonna be a challenge, but.
Right, there's, there's a couple of functions that have to be done, one, I have to wait obviously until the recording is finished, okay, before I can upload it. Um, and then, um, as to be doc, you know, and we've got to do some manipulation on our end to make that work. I, I would at least expect the rest of the day to have that, have that before we actually publish it. And then maybe the next day, Wednesday, that Wednesday morning, we could publish.
If they can't interact, that's a little bit, I mean, I don't mind if people watching, but I mean, it, right, you know, like when we do the. Ask for the citizens' input, being able to talk to them is.
Well, they would have that option then, if they want to interact, they can join Zoom, they're, they're just interested to hear what's going on and.
They're looking for a replacement of the newspaper, the next day is plenty good.
Yeah, yeah, they're still gonna be quicker than what the newspaper got to do.
And you can listen.
I mean, it's gonna be a non-biased, non-dictated, you know, I'm not saying, but it's not gonna be some reporter's version of it, it's gonna be the actual.
You want to access that or intend?
Yeah.
I mean, because do you need, how do you access YouTube live? I mean, how, how would I?
You, you would go to the channel, the Crawford County I or the channel.
Cool.
So you could watch it from the Crawford County, you could go to the Crawford County website, to the Crawford County Board of Supervisors. And then there, click on a link to watch it live.
I don't know if I can actually post, or like, post it that way on our website, I just know like within YouTube, I could provide the link. That you can click directly to YouTube and then YouTube.
So you don't, you don't need YouTube TV?
No, no.
Okay.
Yeah.
And it doesn't cost us anything to stream it live.
None of it, it, it's, there's a zero dollar amount to any of it, so.
If we get a lot of hits, we might make money.
Well, that, we have to, we have to, we have to elect that into that, uh.
Okay.
Portion, um, and then.
You don't want to be that.
No. Because then you're, because then you, you start getting into ads and things and I, I, when, when you start doing ads, I don't, I, I immediately.
I was, I was trying to inject.
But yes, you're absolutely right, Ty, if you get like a million to two million views, then that's when you, you do get some revenue.
Yeah, thank you, that many people wouldn't probably be all that interested in our name, but.
So, but.
Scary.
But, yeah, I just wanted to, just kind of float that, and if you guys just want me to go ahead and publish, I can, I mean, it's not that big of a deal. Okay, um, they're all up there right now and ready to go, so.
Yeah, I think Kyle's right, they're gonna date, yeah, over four hours, I think, my, yeah.
Yeah.
So, okay.
Thank you.
We had a motion in a second, did we?
And.
Yes.
We voted.
Yeah, and then the last thing, and this one, this one is an actionable item, I've talked with Terry about it, is. Um, setting up a, um, a capital expenditure fund for the IT department. Um, this would be allow us to kind of, I could do projects during the summer without having to lose revenue coming back, uh.
Lose revenue?
Not revenue, but expect, you know, a project, so if I'm, let's say I have a project that starts in May, okay, but it's going through August, okay? It makes it very, very difficult to maintain funding through that project if we're overlapping the fiscal year.
Why, not really, you just have to budget for it.
What are these projects, you know, have this at all the time?
For secondary roads, you know, we might buy something.
Yeah, we do it all the time with the secondary roads.
Um, and the other thing is, is that we can, I can start kind of budgeting money in a sense where if we do have a big project, let's say. We, we don't know when we're gonna bring in the county attorney, okay, they're not in the fold right now as far as our IT network.
Hmm.
But at some point, maybe you want to squirrel some money into that fund to be able to migrate them in.
Budget it.
Yeah, so, and then the last one, and I'm gonna great, this is an example, I'm just throwing.
You gotta run it through your IT committee first, so.
Yeah. Fair enough, um. But like, in the case of the Officer sixty-five migration, we didn't finish that, we started it in fall of last year, or no, late summer of last year. We rolled through, the project didn't get finished until winter of last year, we had, I had to pay them for the assistance on that, uh, ten thousand dollars, that's what we agreed to when we first started that project, but. I didn't budget that ten thousand dollars into the following fiscal year because the intent was to believe that would be done within one fiscal year. So.
So you're planning to blow off?
Yeah, for that.
We won't fire you for that, but make sure you don't do it in future.
So. So, but yeah, I just, something to throw on your, I was just mentioning it because Joel Roney mentioned to me, he was like, we've got, we've all got these funds available. Um.
Who's Joel Roney?
He's I C I T, I T SWAT team.
Yep.
Oh, the SWAT team.
Yeah, well, he's, yeah, he, yeah. He was the guy that, um, I had him in assisting me with building out that, we're building the RFP. And I, I, he mentioned, hey, you might want to consider this, and I'm like, it doesn't sound like a terrible idea.
Run it by your IT committee if they think it's a sound idea, then.
Okay. Yeah, actually, Joel works for ISAC now.
Does he? Okay, so, and I, I talked with Mike about it too, at least, yeah, so.
By the time they vet it, Martha and everybody else on that committee, that's pretty, you know, you'll have a better.
I didn't plan on putting, actually, oops, sorry.
I don't want to circumvent it.
I tried to here.
Um, I, I didn't plan on actually sticking in that capacity, you know, but I, I just figured I can, like, I'll make it for.
Okay.
Meeting archives to YouTube and then YouTube posts.
Okay, they're not tax dollars, it's not tax dollars.
So.
It's a tax.
So.
Yep. Slush fund.
Does that go on that?
So, our, our funds are slushing, you know?
We've been, that's what we've been actually working on, so our, so you understand our process, our thought process here. We've been working real hard to eliminate those slush funds so that, well, because if it's in your budget, no matter what line item it's in. Once it's approved by us, you can manipulate, and we've been trying to clean that up in every department, so that it's fair to every department, we're holding every department to it, you see what I'm getting at?
Manipulate the right word.
Yeah. But yeah, they just.
Depends on how you want to look at it. Massages, yeah.
Yeah, they just mentioned like if they, like the bigger counties, if they have like a two hundred thousand dollar storage device that they got to purchase, you know, within five years, they, they. Put a little money in there so it doesn't immediately go back, and then the.
And that's, and, and you're, and, and we do have other, other, other entities within the county that do that, like, there was money getting put away in EMS for the towers prior to. That's why they were able to pay for most of these upfront, if not all, but, you know, we're open all of it, but.
Granted, I don't see us ever having to have like a two hundred thousand dollar asset, but, you know, for my purpose, like, you know, having a smaller one, say maybe closer to forty or fifty thousand.
Well, we have recognized that your projects usually aren't cheap.
Yeah.
But yeah, I think if you plan getting up Jake though, and you do typically plan getting up, I mean, you're, nobody's gonna ask you to be perfect, well, we'll ask you to be, but you, you know, we don't expect you to be out of that.
Fair enough, so.
Okay.
Okay, thanks Jake.
Yep.
Thank you, sir.
Anything, any other questions, comments you got for me?
No, I'm actually pretty good right now.
Okay.
Thank you.
Yep, no problem.
Good job.
Discuss, take action, allocation serves as three-year contract renewal, do we have somebody that's gonna be on Zoom for that or?
It was in your packet.
It was in your packet.
Yeah, I remember seeing, I thought you said, somebody said somebody.
Cost allocation, value of service that we use, sort of the, VHS develops their cash, their thoughts and whatever, and, uh.
Yep.
What money we get back.
Those expenses that they pay the county for providing them the space that we're required to by code.
Yeah, so I'd make a motion to approve the cost allocation services for a three-year contract.
I will second that.
Motion's been made by Mr. Schultz, seconded by Ms. Hayden. Are there any further discussion? Hearing none, all in favor, state so by saying aye.
Aye.
Oppose nay? Chair votes aye, motion carries.
What elevator, oh, so, um, no, not yet, um, I talked to Dave about it, he wanted to.
Over, sit, over.
Get a proposal, no, the maintenance plan for this elevator, so our warranty ran out in January and it hasn't been.
Yeah.
Been missed since then, yeah, so we need a new maintenance plan, and he is going, also asking Schumacher, who also is another elevator company. So we'll have a couple options. Yeah.
Excellent.
I just did, because.
Yeah, no, originally it was gonna, yeah, and it's still in the packet.
I was unfamiliar with, with that cost thing, I just assumed it was the elevator thing, but. Okay.
Okay.
I was gonna bring up before, I, I called you and let you know last week too, um, so I'll come back to study that, when it was gonna be done, end of June here, first part of July.
Excellent.
It was asked about not being fully funded, not all the counties kicked in like we had hoped to, so we had like thirty thousand from counties contributions. Then there was another twenty-two thousand that needed to be to finalize it, the supervisor's affiliate and ISAC itself covered that difference. To make it happen.
So the funding is there for your project?
Yeah, and it's underway right now, it should be finished up here.
Pretty soon, end of June, huh?
Yep, but that's what, I know, I don't know if it was Karen or Cindy asked about not being fully funded, but, um, it is.
And they're on, so they should.
So they, they expect it to be public at the end of June?
Yeah, I hope so.
Okay.
Tell them that's something.
Sometimes being done and being published or being put out.
I called Bill Peterson directly, he said, yeah, we'll hopefully get the results and bunch back by end of June, first part of July.
Super.
Okay, excellent, well, thank you.
And I guess, I was hoping that our meetings would be more like this, that you could just go on our website and, uh.
The, the list of them, you mean?
Yeah, yeah.
And I think that's how it'll be, isn't it?
No, it's just gonna, and so, I didn't want to bring it up, but I don't know if in your IT meeting, if you can, or if we need that.
Is that by date?
Yep, and it's just right there.
Yeah, because so, right now, they're on there by date and you can actually go in and read the minutes.
Oh, just.
So you would think that the link, a link could be added by date.
I want to keep us all standing here.
For the YouTube.
So you just.
No, I agree, I think that's the way to do it.
You can watch it.
Right, I like that, you should be able to add a. It, it should be, to me, it'd be simple to add, right, like what you already got. If another county's doing it, why can't? Is that Carroll County's live?
This is, this is Shelby.
Oh, Shelby.
Does Carroll do live?
That's what Dave was saying.
Yeah, I thought they do live.
Yeah, I mean, I'm not against that, but if they can't talk to us, then it's kind of.
Right, that's.
Exactly.
I think there is.
That's where Zoom is a nice option, we're live within.
For those who want to be in, yeah.
But what, what this gives, that nothing else gives, is, let's say you're washing dishes on Tuesday night, you just kind of want to listen to what went on, so you're updated. And you, if you have a comment, you can always call afterwards and say, I was listening to the board meeting last night and, uh, this and that, maybe get on the agenda for the next meeting or, um. I just, I feel like going to YouTube is a little bit more complicated and the generation that's probably gonna listen to this is gonna probably appreciate this a little bit more. And a link to YouTube, uh, you know.
I suggest, we suggest that to Jake.
Just as long as the link goes directly to.
Well, and, and that, right, that just seems like.
At least you just gotta click on one thing and I'm at the medium where it goes to YouTube or goes to.
This was what I was kind of.
We've downloaded it.
I didn't want to go outside until I talked to you guys about that before I made that suggestion.
No, I mean, that's, I think that that's the other way to do it, wouldn't you, Kyle, what's your?
Well, I don't, I'm like Craig, I mean, if you click on the link that says meeting. May, May seventeen, twenty twenty-three, and you click that and it, and the YouTube video pops up.
Yep.
Could be like view minutes, meeting, you can click on the minutes or I can click on the meeting.
Oh, that's why, but I'm, I'm not visualizing that as being that, this just seems clean, simple, and you can go to exactly where you're at and not be directed anyplace else.
And that would be under our heading, under the Board of Supervisors, yeah.
Because that just says click to watch, right?
Yeah.
That's all we want, I should say, just.
Well, you're gonna have to go to another.
But you don't know, no, you don't.
You're gonna have to go to YouTube.
But don't that would be directly.
That can go directly to.
So it's not like you have to click that and then click something else.
No, just click on one thing.
Which one of you are IT?
Even if you go to YouTube.
Aren't you on IT?
Yeah, me and Dave are. Yeah, it should be all, no matter what it is.
I wanted to swing in my lane, not her.
Come on, I was doing you a favor, him and I both.
But you were right.
I both of us talked to you about it.
And you might hear from him that, that that is actually directing meetings YouTube, I don't, that's kind of why I brought it up, I just wanted to make sure before we. Got into it that we are all.
But each date, each agenda, each meeting should have its own link, and not one link and then you gotta look for the dates inside.
See, that's, that's what, that's why I brought this to our attention.
With the link to already be posted there, where you click on it, it all.
Here's, here's what I would like to have.
Unless it's super easy.
Me and Dave know what the board wants, so when we have our IT meeting, we'll make sure it's done that way.
What I would like to see is an example of a county that's doing it that way, to see if we like that way or this way better, before we get it all signed up, and that's what we're doing, we find out that we have the hard way.
Yeah.
Easy way.
I mean, I, I think you might be misunderstood that if, even if it goes to YouTube. Live or YouTube video, it's still just a one click, it's not a click to get into YouTube and then I have to go find it, that's not the way it is. It's, it should just, it should just be, you can click it, and even if it's through YouTube, it, it goes directly to the video for that meeting.
Never assume anything.
I'm just saying that ninety-nine percent of how it's done.
Okay.
That's how it's done.
It's good enough for me.
I know, but if he hasn't done it before.
I.
Well.
Craig, that's good enough for me.
We got, we got.
We'll make sure.
We got.
They got. Sorry.
I mean, just to, uh, full disclosure. Uh, our thirty-year class reunion that I was at, I gave a speech, a classmate of mine put it on their phone. And we ended up putting it on YouTube.
I want to see that, how do I find it?
Can we search it?
My name is not, so I'm such, I wonder my name.
Class of what?
But, um, it was eighty-one.
L eighty-one, sorry.
But that was our third year, that's already been ten years, but, uh, so you can find it on YouTube.
Yeah, you just have to.
But you have to search, but if you have the link, you just click the link and you're right there.
My little grandson did a dance when he was like two years old by a fire pit, and I can still find that to show people on YouTube because it's hilarious, he does the splits at the end. Waiting for the end.
It is maybe just lasting longer than.
Does anybody else?
No timeframe, no, not, not you, no, you're.
Is there anything else to bring before the board, by the way, the supervisors? Well, I was gonna ask citizens next.
Yep.
All right, do we have any citizens' input?
Hi, this is Cindy Kerdoff, I would just like to say thank you very much for following up on the recording and getting them online, I appreciate that.
That's gonna stop until it's done.
Now, we, we're trying to figure out ways to repl- replace our, I mean, the media's still actually, I seen where there's still some stuff in the newspaper.
They're listening to it a week later.
So, but, you know, that could be delaying it that much further and some of you may want to know things a little bit sooner, so we're trying to keep up with the times.
Cindy, I see the advantage to this, that you get to hear the whole thing and not just, uh, edited versions of a ninety-minute conversation, so, uh, that's why I think this is even better.
Exactly.
Might have to apologize, you have to watch the unedited version sometimes, it might be all.
Careful what you wish.
Exactly. Okay, is there anything else, any other citizens? Hearing none, I would entertain a motion to adjourn.
Second.
Mrs. Hayden makes a motion to adjourn, seconded by Mr. Mulbauer, all in favor, state so by saying aye.
Aye.
Oppose nay? Chair votes aye, motion carries. Thank you, everybody, appreciate it, good meeting, I think we accomplished what we had on the agenda.